I'm go I'll call the November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board to order. So roll call, roll call. Presence, uh, Matt Lowry. Kevin York. Bill Spalding. And Theo Noel. And Jim, so I all members of the planning board are present. Uh, moving to item number two, approval of the October twenty ninth, twenty twenty four mini minutes. Have all the members of the planning board had a chance to review and or do you have any comments?
I have no comments, I'll make a motion to accept the. Meeting minutes as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Are the are these the November fourteenth minutes minutes or October twenty ninth?
These are the October twenty ninth meeting minutes.
They're the November fourteenth minutes.
Oh, I apologize, I have the wrong, okay. Uh, so, uh, Matt, would you like to amend your motion to the October fourteenth? Meeting minutes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the October fourteenth meeting minutes as presented.
I'm sorry, to the chair, um, it's November fourteenth, not October fourteenth. They're from the, I believe that those are from the um, special meeting you had. Correct me if I'm wrong, Susan.
Yes, the November fourteenth meeting.
Always, so November fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve any meeting minutes we have from the past right now, so.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Matt, seconded by Kevin. Bill.
Uh, approve.
Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so motion passes four to nothing. So moving on to item number three in the agenda. The one fifty four and one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision, it's a continuance of the previously open public hearing. So, uh, with that being said, uh, I believe Attorney McGrail. There has been some movement related to the proceedings with the zoning board appeals, but there isn't much new material for this board to. Review at this time, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So do you want to kind of give us an overall update and we can kind of figure out next steps for for our interaction?
I would love to do that, I appreciate that. Um, that's what I was anticipating, so, um, we met, we we filed with the zoning board of appeals this week. I had, uh, uh, advise you that we would, we had our first meeting with them, public hearing on November twenty, two thousand twenty four. Um, that, um, that meeting generated, uh, memos from various departments which I shared with your board. Um, who, um, the town senior planner Samantha Elliott. Um, just some highlights of those memos from town departments, if I may. Um, the fire department, uh, wants us to confirm that the cul-de-sac will work for their apparat- apparatus. Which is obviously a relevant issue for you, um, so we're in the process of doing, um, um. Rich Williams who's here, um, with me tonight, and I'm sorry, let me digress for a minute, Rich Williams is here. Um, from, um, Williams and Sporages, and my client Nicholas Leo is here, uh, also. Um, but, uh, Rich knows that that will work, but we need to show that to the fire department and share that with you. Um, fire department also, uh, referenced the need for a, a fire hydrant at on the cul-de-sac, which is already there, but we will can confirm that with the chief. Those are the major points, uh, at this point in time from the fire department. Uh, Conservation Commission, uh, sent in a correspondence, uh, reminding us that we need to file a notice of intent which your boys are aware of. filing for the Conservation Commission, and I'll get into that a little bit in a second. Um, and then, um, most of the comments are from the, uh, DPW Engineering Department. Um, and they deal with, um, uh, the, um. You know, refuse and recycling, which we're aware of. Um, they have some issues or concerns with the layouts of the utilities in the subdivision. Which they've asked to meet with, uh, our engineer, Rich Williams, to try to resolve. Um, they talked a little bit about traffic, which we, we, uh, we're dealing with the Traffic Advisory Committee on that. Um, they need a hydrant flow test done, which is standard that has not been done yet, and would be of interest to your board also. Um, they want, uh, some sewer, uh, service connection details. Uh, which we'll talk to them about, and they have some, um, uh, issues that they've raised on drainage. Uh, that we need to, uh, meet with them and resolve. So, the there are open issues based on, uh, the correspondences. Um, I also want to note that, um, you, you, uh, at your last meeting, there was. Some testimony, uh, from some of the direct neighbors, um, and folks across the street. Um, that had interest in meeting with my client, uh, to my client's credit, he has reached out to all of them, has had, uh, meetings. With them, in an effort to dress, address concerns that they have and bring them into the, into the, into play on landscaping. Um, amenities that would, um, potentially help them and benefit them. Uh, in drainage issues, uh, so we're working with them in particular. Um, there's a director butter, uh, the Abu Zara's who were on tonight, they're represented by council, we've had. A couple of meetings with them in their drainage experts because they have concerns for drainage impacts on their property. And we continue to work with them, and, uh, we owe them some correspondence and we we have them, uh, in the loop, and we'll have subsequent meetings with them also. In an effort to, uh, address their concerns as we move forward. Um, we have not filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission yet. Uh, because Rich Williams feels that we need to get, uh, the drainage, um, design. Um, kind of more, um, um, completed. Uh, before we file with CONCOM, um, from the town engineering perspective and from the abutters perspective. Otherwise, it potentially could, uh, just be a waste of time for CONCOM to have to review it two or three times. So we will be fine with them when we, when we, um, get closer to a final design after working with all of the parties. Um, we, uh, did not forget Matt Lowry's request on locating the trees, as was requested at the last meeting. Um, Rich Williams has gone out and actually located them all as Matt requested, they just have not been plotted on the plan yet, so when we. Submit a revised plan to your planning board, uh, we'll make sure that those are located on there. Um, as Matt had, uh, requested. So, um, we are scheduled, um, to be back before the zoning board, uh, at their January eighth. Or their January twenty second meeting, we're not sure. Um, we, they, they meet again on December eleventh, but we won't be ready with this information for them. Uh, and we wouldn't have, uh, you know, especially with the holiday, to be able to meet with the town administrative folks and with some of the neighbors. Um, in order to be ready for that, uh, they also, as you're aware, have two, uh, very major. Uh, master and laws, chapter forty B projects that they're dealing with on the hot street, which are. Consuming a lot of their time and and they have both of those hearings, I think, potentially wrapping up at their December eleventh meeting, so they really. Did not have a lot of room or time for us on that agenda anyways. So, um, you were this, you would mention, uh, Mr. Chair, where do we go from here? Uh, it's certainly up to the board, our suggestion would respectfully be. Uh, that the planning board will continue this matter to their meeting on January twenty eighth. Um, I don't think we're gonna have in- information for you, um, um, at until that time, based on what I just stated and the work that needs to be done. Uh, and we won't be back to the ZBA to, uh, till either the eighth or the twenty second, perhaps, perhaps both of those meetings. Uh, but time will tell depending on our progress. So that respectfully would be my suggestion, and again, we're happy to answer any questions you might have tonight. Um, but, um, also, just as a reminder, um. You do need another extension of time, uh, because we've extended you to December thirty one at this point. And I would respectfully suggest, um, that we would request that you would, we would extend your time to March thirty one. Um, I don't want to mess around with this, just doing it in nickels and dimes, you know, one month at a time. Um, just go right out to the end of of March, I think it's gonna take that much time with all the boards that are involved. So that's the update, and we'll, we kind of see things. Uh, progressing forward, and again, we're happy to, uh, answer any questions or entertain any comments of the board.
Um, before I open it to the other members of the board, just from a, um, from a process perspective, if we were to. Uh, proceed with continuing the public hearing to the one twenty eight meeting, would you anticipate? That there would be a revised plan that would be available for our review for that meeting?
I would hope, I would hope. Um, so, you know, we've, we've got some issues with the zoning board, uh, that we need to deal with on them, some of the issues that they had on our. On our, uh, attached dwelling complex, um, some design things, so, um. Yeah, I would hope, I mean, I think we can give you a progress plan at that point, um, make sure the fire department's okay, as we said, for the turnaround. Rich can locate the trees which Matt wanted, so yeah, the answer would be yes.
Okay. So I guess, in you so, uh, you and I should just make sure offline that we are in communication, so that if you are not ready for that one twenty eight meeting. We can push it to the two eleven meeting, and make sure that we're not, uh, posting, uh, the meeting that the public might show up for, that there's no. Material im- impact or or update that is, it was warranted, so let's just make sure that we do that to make sure we're respectful of everyone's time. But, um, with that being said, uh, I'll open up to other members of the planning board, if you have any questions or comments that you'd like to, uh, pose at this time.
Uh, I don't have any questions, but I will make a motion to extend the, um. Completion date until March thirty first, twenty twenty five.
The second then.
And to be clear, Matt, you're, you're making a motion that the board issued a letter to the applicant. To extend the windows as such that we have the ability to review their plans till March. And you said, March first or March thirty first?
March thirty first.
March thirty first, and that, that's, that's the intent, correct?
Correct, yeah, let me just, well, there is a March thirty first, right? I think it's a Monday, Matt, I looked. Uh, yeah. Yeah, if you want to do April one, that's fine, because that's a, well, that would be a meeting. I mean, yeah. Yeah, if you want to do to like your first meeting in April to make sure it's on the night that you meet, that's fine also, that might be better, um, whatever the, whatever is the pleasure of the board, Matt. Well, why don't we go till, uh, April eleventh, then? That would be the end of, uh, the second, second week. So, April eleventh, twenty twenty five, we'll ex- at this point, extend the time for us to make a decision.
So I have a motion for Matt to extend. Uh, to re- for our, our board to request the applicant, which they've indicated a willingness to do so, to extend the review window to. From December thirty first, twenty twenty four to April eleventh, twenty twenty five, and I think, believe, Mr. Spalding, you've seconded that motion?
Yes, I will keep that second.
So in that case, Theo Noel.
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
And yes for myself.
Great, I'll send the necessary, uh, correspondence in that regard, first thing tomorrow morning to you and Samantha.
Okay, thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I may, um, one quick thing to Mr. McGrail. Um, as you presumably may have some updated site plans or plans, please make sure that you're forwarding those to me, um, and keeping me in the loop on that, okay?
Yes.
Thanks.
Will do.
Uh, any other comments or questions from other members of the board?
I actually do have one question, Mr. Chair, um. When do you expect, and sorry if I missed this, I was taking some notes, but when do you expect to, um. Uh, send your notice of intent to the Conservation Commission, is it after, um, Mr. Williams? Prepares more drainage information, gets the DPW engineering information, like, when do you think that's going to happen?
Well, our goal on that is to, is to make some, uh, initial design changes as requested by the town engineer. And also as requested by one of our director butters. Um, who has an expert, uh, working for them, was a drainage expert who we've had meetings with. Yes, and Rich Williams is, Rich Williams is working with their consultant, so we wanna, we wanna kind of button all that stuff up. Um, and make sure that the Conservation Commission is reviewing, you know, one set of, uh, drainage studies, et cetera, versus doing it three times.
Okay, that's, that sounds more efficient.
And Attorney McGrail, you're anticipating that's gonna occur in December, is that also in January with the other resumations are unclear?
Uh, that's unclear, I, I don't know. Really depends on how, how it goes and with the holidays, you know, mixed in here, it's, you know, time goes quick, as you know.
Yep, understood.
Uh, I do have another question while we're discussing this, um. I know normally on a small cul-de-sac, um, we really wouldn't deal much with lighting. But since you're potentially having a multifamily at the end of that, um, has you, have you looked at all into? Any street lighting for that cul-de-sac and that intersection to Salem Street? I'm gonna let, Rich, um, can you answer that if you've had correspondence to the light department on that yet?
Yeah, we haven't, um, we haven't come up with the lighting design, uh, we will be doing that over the next, uh, month or so. So, the next, the, the updated plan should have that on there.
So you are anticipating adding lighting to this?
Um, yeah, this, most likely gonna be one light on the cul-de-sac. Uh, is question of whether or not they need a light at the intersection.
Any other members of the board have any other questions or concerns or comments? Okay, in that case, I'll open up, any other members of the public wish to have any comments on? The one fifty four, one fifty eight Salem Street subdivision before the board. Uh, so I see Scott Hanley has raised their hand, so please, if you have a camera on, uh. There you go, thank you, and then just state your name and your address before you start talking.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Scott Hanley, five Toby Lane, uh, knowing this is a, um. New process, uh, for your board, and this is only maybe the second meeting, uh, I will just, uh, repeat. Some of the things that I had mentioned to the zoning board, uh, last week. Uh, you know, the, the director butters and the people across the street are concerned about, uh, traffic density. And, um, you know, the, the overall scale of the thirteen proposed units, uh, at the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, until we see where this progresses, you know, further down the road in your, uh, January meetings, uh, we won't know. You know, we won't have any more information, uh, until then, but, uh, I will just say that I think the, uh, thirteen units, the three buildings. As laid out currently, uh, is, is too packed in, too dense, uh, very congested. And, um, I, I am opposed, uh, to at least this project, um, in its current form. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay, uh, seeing none, then I, so, I think the next action will be, we, Mr. McGrail will be in correspondence to. Have that extension per the board's request from today, and I will put you in pencil on the one twenty eight. Twenty twenty five meeting agenda with, uh, one twenty two as a back, or sorry, with a two eleven as a backup. Um, in case your, your, your team is not ready for the one twenty eight meeting, and we'll make sure that we're in correspondence in January. Um, Mr. McGrail, you're, you're muted, but if you're, if you're amenable to that course of action.
Yeah, I am, if I, if I could respectfully request a, um. Uh, a motion and a vote on the continuance until January twenty eighth, just for the record.
Uh, so, yeah, fair enough, that, that, that probably is something we should do, uh, as long as other members of the board are amenable to, to that. So, do I hear a motion to continue the public meeting to the one twenty eight, twenty twenty five meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So, motion by Bill, seconded by Matt, roll call, vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Theo? And Theo, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, and then, Matt?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate your time and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
So in that case, uh, I'll close item number three on our agenda and pivot to item number four. So revise rules, subdivision rules and regulations update, uh, Theo, this one is you.
Yeah, um. Uh, I'll go ahead and, um, after this meeting, uh, email the, the annotated document to everybody, um. Bill Renault, town engineer, um, and Samantha, um. Will be able to, uh, get us some rebut, some red line comments, um, at some point in, uh, December. So we will be able to review it in January and, um, and then proceed from there, so, um. I suspect, um, it'd be more, more form comments than, than substance, and. Um, and we should be able to, uh, wrap this up, I did take, um, in, uh, folks' comments to light, and I did, um. Annotate it, um, uh, to the, uh, the best of my ability, um. So, uh, you'll see those when, when, when you see them, and, and we can, we can discuss them in another meeting if, if any. Additional annotations need to be made or, uh. You know, explanations or clarifications, and again, the, the annotations were, were added to try to, um. Have a red line document that would be, um. Easily, uh, interpreted by, by each other and, uh, others who wish to comment on the, of the. The recasting of the, the rules and regulations, just to make it, um, uh, clean, clean and simple. The, yeah, I thi- I think that, that's really it, um.
So Theo, can, mind if I just pause you for a second, restate, so I think I heard you say you're gonna send a draft. Annotated version to this board for our, our ability to review, and then I think you heard you say that you're going to solicit comments from. Uh, Sam and Bill Renault, uh, for, within intention to have something to review for this board sometime in January?
Yes.
Uh, should I, should I anticipate that we should, um, plug you in for? The, one of the meetings in January, um, either the, we currently are planning on meeting. In, on the fourteenth or the twenty eighth?
I would plug us in on the fourteenth, and, um, Sam, do you think that's doable?
Sorry about that, um, yeah, so Bill and I plan to get comments back before the end of the year, um, I don't see that being an issue at all. Unless you want more time to review, um, in between week comments, and obviously it won't be that last, like, two weeks, so it'll be probably mid-December. Um, I don't think anybody's gonna be in the office the last week, um. Anyway, I think that it's a reasonable, again, it just really depends on how much back and forth. Follow up you want after we, you get our comments.
Yeah, no, I, um, I think that's great, I, I think, um. Getting your comments and putting them together and bringing them to the, the board is, uh, the most time, time effective. Way to, way to go, um, and then, um. Can, uh, this is a question to Sam and the, the whole board, um, we have to have. Public hearings to, to finalize this, and does this, does this, do we say this has to go to town meeting?
Believe we said we do not have to go to town meeting, but we have to hold a public hearing, and then, after said public hearing, we can vote to incorporate it into our. Into our rules and regs.
Okay, thank you.
But just, uh, comment, we did talk about having the bylaw review committee take a look at it to make sure it doesn't. Um, counter anything that they're working on, or, um, yeah, so if, that's another place to send it to. Unpredict was the word I was looking for.
Yeah.
So what, Theo, I, I'll defer to you, whatever, however you want to manage that process, what I might suggest is to get the comments from Sam, Bill Renault. Have us circle up on the fourteenth of January, and then based, if all of the members of this committee nod our heads yes. Then send it to the bylaw review committee, and then finalize with a public hearing shortly thereafter. But ultimately, I'll, I'll defer to it, you know, you're, you're managing this process, so I will defer to how you, or you would like to manage it.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's the easiest and most effective, I, I would, um. So that, that sounds good.
Anything else from any other members of the board on the rules and regs? Okay, seeing none, I will pivot to item number five, the bylaw review committee, possible joint meeting. So this arose, and, uh, based on. The request from the bylaw review committee, sending something to myself, Aaron and Sam. Where they are interested in potentially holding a joint meeting with us to review the proposed zoning updates that are. Uh, under consideration as part of the, the recodification process, so this is probably a perfect time for me to pivot to. Uh, Mr. York, since you're, you're serving on that committee, and you can kind of outline the, uh, the request.
Yeah, so it actually started with, uh, ZBA making a request for a similar meeting with them, for all of their members to be able to. Um, really not go through everything comprehensively, but rather have Attorney Bobrowski highlight. Changes that have been made from the current form of the bylaws. Um, in, in terms of sus- substantial changes, rather than like wording changes or ordering changes. Uh, so as bylaw review committee talked about it, we felt like it makes sense to also. Open that up to planning board, if we would want the full body, or whoever can make it to that, to, um, be able to also have a similar session with them.
And it, and it looked as if the, the, from the correspondence, it looked like they were, um, proposing on. Having that at our next, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, December tenth. Twenty twenty four, so that'd be in lieu of the regularly scheduled planning board with meeting, which we do not have any action items on the agenda at this time.
That's right, it would also be a hybrid meeting, so we could, uh, go in person to that. If we wanted to, which, um, Chair Libra also mentioned, one of the, uh. Challenges to opening up hybrid meetings for more bodies throughout the town was. Training people on how to use the equipment, uh, so he said he would be happy to use that meeting as a training, uh. So that, Jim, if you wanted to, to operate our meetings that way as well, uh, you would have the experience with that.
Well, so, let's, let's take one thing at a time, so. I'll open it to other members of the board, are we interested in having a joint meeting with the bylaw review committee and having that? That correspondence with Attorney Bobrowski, uh, as they prepare the balance of the recodification process?
Yes, I am.
I am as well.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, so I think we have strong consensus on, we have interest in doing that, and then, um, I, if we can. If we can get people to agree to let us have a hybrid meeting, I think, based on how much we have expressed the, the interests of board. Um, I think I would be interested in having that, uh, it looks like Sam would like to chime in based on that feedback.
Yeah, um, so there's no issue with doing hybrid or trying to start working on coordinating hybrid meetings, I'll be completely honest with getting. Um, so much of my time directed to MBTA communities and forty A, three A. Um, the scheduling of a space for the hybrid meetings just got pushed to the side. Um, so I'm happy now that I'm kind of in between stuff, um, working on getting. All of the paperwork submitted to AG, and then it'll be really out of my hands until we, we hear back from them, um, I'm happy to. Open that back up and work at trying to coordinate and, and figure out some sort of space for that, um, if there is. A preference, um, a strong preference for that, it's definitely feasible, um, I had spoken with Steve about it. Um, just, I need a confirmation, and then I'll start working on trying to figure out spaces, so just let me know as a group.
And Kevin, uh, the intent would be that Attorney Lieber and then Attorney, or sorry, Chair Lieber and then Attorney Bobrowski would be in person along with. The other members of the bylaw review committee?
Uh, in person, or they could also join by Zoom, since it's hybrid, with whichever their personal preferences, but. Uh, from my understanding, Attorney Bobrowski and, uh, Chair Lieber would both be in person.
Okay, uh, so in that case, I think we've got strong consensus from what I'm hearing that we are interested in doing that, and so. Um, I, I, I would ask Sam if you could start working on trying to get that space, uh, teed up.
Well, before, you know, I, I don't know, strong consensus, because some of the hybrid meetings that I've watched. Um, there have been some issues with, with hearing people, is, is that being worked on? Because I, I know, uh, some of the audio, video has not been the best.
Um, sorry, which particular space have you had issues with?
Uh, both of them.
Okay, um, part of, part of that is enunciation related. Um, you have to, there are no individual microphones, and as far as I know, there's no setup for them, I, again, I can double check. Um, at least I didn't say a plug in the wall for any microphones, um. The, the downstairs. The downstairs, what is it, whatever the town hall meeting room is on the first floor, I have. Very frequently noticed that there's a very hard time even hearing people who are projecting and enunciating. Um. So I can look into the microphone issue and then we can always recap that if you want next week and then revisit the potential of a hybrid.
Yeah, I I I would want to look at that. I know the upstairs meeting room. Um, you know, the camera placement i- is is odd, to say the truth. It's basically at table level. Uh anyone who's not sitting in the first two chairs and sitting in the back. You can barely make them out. And also the audio is is just pretty poor, so. Um I I had, I had high hopes that when we, when the town got into hybrid meetings that they would have invested in some. Decent equipment, so uh this would be, you know. Anyone who spoke there would be heard.
Sure, I'm sure the the second, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And and you know, and you knew who was speaking at the time. Cause right now, when I listen to people having conversations in that room. You you cannot tell who's talking.
Yeah.
Have have you seen any of them in the public safety building, Matt?
I have, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, if you're sitting at the front table, that's fine. Uh maybe if people are gonna speak, they need to get up to a certain point. So the camera's looking at them and they're at a microphone. They just can't sit anywhere and expect that people are gonna hear them.
Right, well, I can look into that. Um I don't know if the, so the second floor camera is mounted, I think it's mounted on the wall. Um and it's under the screen. Um but I can always ask if there's any potential since it is, I mean, you you really can't have a meeting, although that space. Likely would not be one that would be available for meetings, just because it's very, it's much harder for people to get up. Um and additionally, right now our elevator is out of service, so the meeting would not be accessible if it were held on the second floor. Um. They're replacing the elevator and I don't know the exact date of when it will be done. Uh sometime in January, I believe, or just late, maybe late December. Um. They've had, I think they've had a lot of little hiccups. I I hear them making a lot of noises. Anyway, um. So but nonetheless, I will check about the microphones. And um see where we can go from there. I don't know if the public safety building would be one that could be reserved reoccurring. So I'll again check on that calendar as well, and then I can report back on the potential um at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. I mean, I'm all for hybrid meetings, but I want people to be able to understand. Who's speaking, what they're saying, and who they are. Which I I think right now is not not coming through the best.
Sure.
Okay, so Sam, you want to work on that? And then we'll, we'll, we'll definitely have a joint meeting with the. Bylaw review committee. I'll respond to them and they'll indicate that we're evaluating options for hybrid. Uh with a backup of it being remote if we can't find a suitable solution.
Sure, is um. I will tag, I guess I'll just talk to you about that via email, Jim, and coordinate.
Yep, I think that's the best way to do it. Twelve, ten. Hybrid if. Uh anything else in terms of the possible or the joint meeting with the bylaw review committee now being scheduled for December tenth? Okay, so in that case, I will close item number five and pivot to item number six, planner update. Which uh I'll take my prerogative in saying, congratulations to Sam for all the hard work on three A and getting. That zoning passed at town meeting. I thought you did a great job and that you were really well. Prepared and articulate and were able to distill a complicated set of uh topics down in a. You know, I think a reasonably digestible manner for folks who were coming from a cold. While providing the sufficient level of detail for the folks who have been following along the whole process. So really well done.
Yeah.
Really proud of uh of the town for being able to pass that. So uh kudos to you and congratulations to start off.
Thank you. Of course, it's a group effort. Um so I would be remiss to not acknowledge. All of the background work um y'all have done as well as Aaron. Um Steve put a lot of time into it as well as the the town council and subcommittee. Um it's again, group effort and I just really am thankful that it is. Um now something that we can work on moving forward and focusing on the grants and um even potential developments. Uh whether or not, again, they come to fruition, um I'm happy to. To be able to look to that side instead of the the concern. Um so as, it's a great segue. Um. As Jim has mentioned, yes, we had it passed at town meeting and. Are now in the process of getting the packet together to send to the AG EUHLC um to confirm that we're in compliance and that everything looks good. We did have a preliminary review um from the AG office, so I don't anticipate any um any issues. And it was modeled o- off of the previous one, which had no issues. And then also the um. Other municipalities who have had some that have passed. So I feel like we're moving in a good direction on that. Um I will keep you posted. I think the turnaround is about ninety days. Right now, I'm gonna guess that they're probably gonna be inundated um with those who are are hitting the deadline. At the end of the year. So. Um that's one big thing. The housing production plan, the survey is out, so if you can pass along. Um disseminate against people or amongst people you know um that may be helpful. Uh for the group and the consultant so that they can gather more data. Um if you want language. To send it along with, feel free to reach out. I can pass them along to you as well. Um. The consultant again is busily working at getting the rest of the the process done for the housing needs assessment. And should be releasing a summary um for the with the advisory committee, I think in January, um December, January timeframe. Um no, that'll be released in in uh December. And then in January, they'll they'll have the survey and have a little bit more of a of a guidance for the housing production plan. Anyway. So those are the two really big things that are going on right now. Um we're gonna be gearing up looking for grants. Um again, as as now, again, the forty A is passed, so we can start looking at that. We'll probably be looking um at the herd school just and and some other projects around town. Um. What that will entail, I'll keep you posted if there's anything planning board would be involved, but um. I think that's really the most of what's going on um on my side. And I have had people reach out. Already to ask about MBTA communities, so. We'll see what actually happens um with. Potential sites too on that. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um either here in the meeting or over email. Um and that's it.
Anyone have anything for uh for Sam?
Um you mentioned uh the herd school um with the, I I wonder what. What that grant would be? Is that just um um building assessment to contemplate future uses? Okay.
Yeah, so because there's so much potential and the last time it was even talked about was years ago. Um the. Position that I've taken is that we really need to do more of technical um assistance and some. Assessments of the structure, potential uh uses um and then. Have you utilize that technical assistance, the results of that um process? And then kind of work with the public and and start to to get that back and forth going. Um. It wouldn't be, we don't have a specific project in mind or a target group. I know the housing. Excuse me, the housing trust is happy to put some of their funds um that have come back from units that were. Um converted to market. They want to put some of those funds towards a project that is a hundred, preferably a hundred percent affordable. But as for whether or not that's the herd school, that's what we're hoping to kind of glean from this is whether or not that school has. Even the capacity to really genuinely be converted into residential at a. A level that would be productive and helpful. Um I'm also starting to to work with reaching out to. Mass housing and mass development to figure out if um. Or what kind of that feasibility component is for us um and who we can start reaching out to, which grants.
Yeah.
So um that's the, that's the big development. So that's the big component of it is really just technical assistance at this point.
Wonderful. Um and the the due date for the survey? December sixteenth, right? Yeah.
I'll have to double check that with the consultant. I know it's in December, but we've had so many, I've gone back and forth with them on so many different dates. Um it's not fresh in my mind. So. I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay, um the um so I I I'm sorry, we didn't mention the the survey at the the beginning of the meeting just for. The the um our our neighbors who are on the call. Um so do we, do we get a log of everybody who signs up? Uh for these meetings? Can we, can we be building an email list and and circulating the survey event too?
So we can't just take legally by SEC regulations, you can't just take emails and send them out. You would have to have somebody opt in to joining an email list. It is sent out as part of. The town newsletter and the employee newsletter that go around. Um. And I think there was one post on the town's website, I mean, the town's Facebook page. Um which you can just reshare that. And that's a great way to help get some traction, make a comment and reshare it. That helps to to boost it in the algorithm too. Um. The, I know the deadline is right after the next meeting, so it's just, it's it's mid-December.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think it's the sixteenth. Um. Which is a Monday.
Okay, uh anything else for uh planning updates? Okay, anyone from the board have any questions for Sam? Okay, so in that case, I'll close item number six, proceed to item number seven. Items not anticipated by the chair. Uh before we get into others, I do want to just have a little bit of house cleaning. Uh so specifically talking about our next set of meetings. So we have the meeting for December tenth that we just set the agenda that we're gonna be having the joint meeting with the bylaw review committee. Our next regularly scheduled meeting would be land on Christmas Eve. So I'm going to propose that we proactively cancel that, cause I can't imagine that we're going to be doing that. And then um after that would be the uh January fourteenth meeting for which. Currently, the only item I have on the agenda is the rules and regulations. So if there's anything else that anyone else would like to raise. The only other thing that I have as a as an ongoing to do that um I would like to kick off. Potentially that January fourteenth meeting is discussions related to any potential ADU. Zoning uh based on the fact that that's gonna be going in effect in February. And I would anticipate we're gonna start that process if we're gonna have a zoning. For spring town meeting, we probably need to start in January. Uh Sam?
I I need to get in the habit of clicking the little button that shows my hand raised. Um but through through the chair, I just wanted to let um everybody know I have started researching it. Um have been in touch a little bit with Bill. We've been back and forth chatting about webinars too that are available. Um to kind of get at least some foundation of of direction to go. Um but I am. Aware of the deadlines and trying to uh at least start to get some of that ball rolling.
And if I could just add to that, um there were two offered webinars. One was from the state and it was very informative, like laying down exactly what it is, what it's not, all that. And then there was another one that was interesting um in Arlington, uh mostly through a company that helped um design and build a prefab. ADU, um it was, it was interesting. It was a, the format was nice. So yes, collecting information, Sam and I will get together and figure out. And plan our approach. Um yeah, not gonna happen this week.
Is Bill, is it would would the that January fourteenth, just trying to figure out my agendas that we're setting, does that, is that reasonable or would you rather it be on the twenty eighth?
I I don't know, Sam. I think we should have something to report for sure and have the board as a discussion.
Yeah, I have some good basic framework um kind of based off of the first um that first um state. ADU regulation um overview you were talking about. So I do have some bullet points for us to kind of use as a launching point for a conversation. I have met with. Other departments to start getting what are some of their hot button items that we need to be thinking about with this. Um what things need to be. What do we need to be cognizant of or make sure that we're addressing or not addressing explicitly, because some things you don't want to codify. Um. So I have had that conversation. So as soon as we can, you know, tag up um and kind of go over some of that to at least put something together. We should be able to have some good basic um components to put forward for the January meeting.
Agree. Put us on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Lowry, it looks like you wanna.
Yeah, I had a, so basically this. This is gonna be enacted before we can have a, before we have town meeting. Uh if we have the outline of what we. Are gonna propose at town meeting, does that in any way guide or do anything with? Between the ti- the time it goes in and enactment as a state law and the time that we pass something? Or is that just a lost bit of time that if anything happens, we have no control over it?
Uh Samantha?
It's so through the chair, um it's a donut hole. It's the best way to explain it. Unfortunately. Our current regulations for. Accessory apartments will cover some of that, but a lot of those components. We're effectively rewriting that entire section. So a lot of those components can no longer be utilized. Um the restrictions, I mean, and then there's the potential for it to be. A new separate structure, not that there there aren't a ton of lots. I don't think you would be able to do something like that in Wakefield. Um but should somebody choose to do something like that and they do have one of the lots, they would have to meet current zoning regulations. So we need to have the existing setbacks of the primary structure. Um. Whatever other height restrictions we may have would come into play. It wouldn't have. So let's say like a lot of times with accessory dwelling units or garage apartments, you have a reduced setback. Um for the side and rear. And whether or not we do that is mo- this is just kind of an example of another municipality it works for. They had a reduced setback. So normally you would have. A fifteen foot side setback um and like a ten foot rear setback or ten, whatever, ten and twenty. So. You would have to meet those on if you're following under standard code. But if you're reverting to the overlay, they have a five foot from the edge of the eve, a five foot setback for accessory garage apartments. Um as long as the primary residence was occupied, that's how they they did those. Um anyway, so it was just something slightly different, but you couldn't get. It it wouldn't, um there weren't benefits. From following standard code. And so the way code is set up right now is that, again, you'd have to meet standard regulations. There's no benefit. That's offered or no reduction in in zoning regulations. So there's no reduced setbacks. Um or anything along those lines currently from the state level. So the state is regulating the size and then that you can't have a, you can't force the primary. Um owner or the owner to live in in the primary residence or one of the structures. And um I think there's a handful of other things, but most. What it's going to to look like is effectively a second structure and not an accessory structure setback. Um.
Sam, if I just pause you for a second, I think the better way to put it is just. We've got existing zoning bylaws associated with ADUs that are gonna be partially not enforceable. And there are portions of it that will be enforceable. And the intent of this new zoning that would go into effect from after the spring town meeting would be to. Take all the non-enforceable components out, do an evaluation of what we want to keep and what we want to change. As part of a proposed new ADU and right-size it to be in conformance with the state.
Yes, um that's, that's a much more eloquent version of what I was trying to say. The other component is that um. A- again, there will be existing setbacks that have to be followed for whatever the the primary zoning. District is, there will be no reductions offered um that aren't already existing in code, if that. District is, there will be no reductions offered um that aren't already existing in code, if that makes sense.
Alright, so basically the the town doesn't have a huge amount of exposure of suddenly everyone. Filing permits to get ADU and before we enact something.
Through the chair, no, at this point, there's not. The same exposure that other municipalities may have, um but generally speaking, the state set it up. So that the municipalities would have a lot more control over some of those specifics um. The other thing to think about um is whether and this is kind of just a plant to seed to mull it over right now. The thing that the state allowed was the prohibition of short term rentals in these accessory dwelling units. So that right now it's not regulated in any way, shape or form in our code um. That will be a bylaw for another time that has to go to town meeting, but at this point, there is, they're not. They're floating in a gray zone, they're permitted by omission effectively, um that's what ZBA has determined. So the MBTA community's overlay explicitly outlaws them and then. And then the ADU by law could potentially outlaw them, it doesn't currently, so that's the only, I think. Real exposure that Wakefield will have.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else on the ADUs? Um anything else in terms of potential items for the one fourteen twenty five? Meeting besides rules and regs and ADUs, anyone wants to raise? Okay, so in that case, I'll turn it over and any other items not anticipated by the chairs but any other members of the planning board? Seeing none, I will pivot to item number, I'll close item number seven and move to item number eight, uh adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Matt, second by Bill, Theo.
Uh yes, with again um a round of applause for Sam and the town.
Absolutely, uh Kevin. Bill.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and uh thank you all, have a great night.